Minutes for June twenty eighth, July twelfth and July twenty sixth. I read them all and it looked good to me. It's a lady over there.
I spell everybody's name right now.
Bye.
Yeah, sorry.
Right. On the minutes, I just have one thing I want to address. I apologize for not having a private. When I looked online, it was the second set of minutes. Where I was discussing that I would fix a wash on Route one thirty two if the state didn't. It also goes on to state in the next sentence that I would fix washes on one thirty five of Coffey Road as well. That isn't the case. I just kind of want to get that straightened.
Okay.
Those are statements. Thank you.
Oh. Oh.
Being late will be penalized. I, you know, Mr. Jerry. I think you would prefer to penalize me for being late than penalize me for not having a shower today.
That's really. Anyway, so what are you guys?
I'll make a motion that we approve the June twenty eighth and July twelfth and July twenty six minutes with the amendment that Dan made.
I will second that.
Okay, so this is motion by Chris, seconded by Mark to approve the minutes of the those three weeks, I mean, three meetings. Okay, there I see.
Yep, got it.
And then, uh, with the, with the.
Yeah, I'll edit it when we resend them to Justin.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next our department reports and. Yes, Dan.
I can go first.
Sure.
Um, I know Justin, he copied me on the email he sent you out the weekly recaps.
Yeah.
Uh, the last two weeks. Uh, yeah, great luck on those. Let me know. As far as this week, uh, obviously yesterday was another monsoon day. Of, and we spent the day fixing a lot of the damages still more and some of it's from previous rainstorms. I just haven't got to yet. But we prepared Wagon Road today that that may open the two lanes. Thankfully, the water wasn't coming down the hill anymore. We fixed the drainage there, but it was coming directly across the road from fog or stream or whatever feeds. So it was just insane amount of water. Um, but it's fixed now. They also fixed washes.
Is that because of the culvert size under the road there? I mean, I know we replaced that culvert under Bruce's.
Yeah, apparently it was done in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. It's very recent. Um, it's a thirty inch culvert. We, we assessed it a lot this morning. We debated on pulling it out, putting in a bigger one. When we walked into the woods, looked at what the contributor was to it, we realized that there's no size culvert we can put in that will fix the problem. Uh, we'd have to put in an upgrade that it's where we've solved the water coming down the hill. As long as we keep maintaining those ditches and culverts up the hill, it will stop that contributing factor from making it worse, but we could put a five foot culvert in there and
Still wouldn't be enough.
It's still down because yesterday here in the height of it was boring and we were assessing it. You know, we was out there and then the water was over my ankle with my boots. So that was six inches of water right across the road as fast as it could go.
Right.
Uh, so no, no, there's no culvert that can take it.
You know, in Texas, what they do is just like a concrete crossing that has, you know, five inches of water whenever it rains really hard.
Yeah, we can swing it. Uh, we fixed washes on Cemetery Road today, uh, which were rewashes of earlier washes. Uh, it's going to require a lot more pitching and shoulder work to correct the problem from recurring. Uh, fixed a small wash on Country Acres Road, which is a road we had just recently repaired and just it had that time to totally set back and get comfortable. So, um, and, uh, we will continue to, on the way on the, on the, on the list. I'm getting a lot of calls from residents all over town that have concerns with their ditches, their shoulders. The amount of rain this year is just bringing small issues, making them huge issues. Um, so I just ask for the patience as we tackle the most dangerous ones first and we'll keep going on until we can't this year and then pray that come next, next spring or whatever that we don't start off with another round of rain like we've had and keep addressing issues. That's not what I wanted to update you on. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
I'm sure they haven't started the copper dam because, or have they started anything?
They, they are there. They, they arrived Monday, brought some equipment in, um, duty obviously this just a little wash. Uh, they, they brought in more equipment today and they're working. I, I didn't get down today to see where they're at.
They brought in a lot of sandbags.
So I assume they have some sort of agreement with the property owner for access.
They, they must have because that road was totally, uh, the access road was totally redone. It's eight inches of nice road gravel. Um, and I, they must have worked out the issues. I wasn't ready to it. So they're there, they're starting. I know the water level on the, on the lake is going to affect them. I have the gate wide open and
Roaring down by my house. So it's funny a lot in there. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Last thing I heard was the town attorney was negotiating with an attorney that represented the owner of the road, trying to come to some kind of an agreement. They hadn't quite reached it yet, but they were pretty sure. The guy didn't want to see the project not be able to be done, but he had some concerns that he wanted met.
All my dealings with the contractor have been very pleasant, very professional. They seem like a very good outfit to work with. So I would, I would assume that they've been able to reach agreements. Things will be taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
With that, if you're all set, I'm gonna, if you're all set, don't think of anything else. I didn't see any else on the agenda that I thought would kind of infringe on me. Make sure you guys are all set with that.
Well, think of something while you're gone.
Right, good. My retirement has been steady. We just surpassed a hundred calls for this calendar year. We had a few cars and it's crashes this past couple of weeks, a couple of odd end calls. Um, had a great time with our summer barbecue this past Saturday. It was a good time. Uh, community night out, still is thunder, but a great turnout. Good job. Um, tank eighty five is finally being serviced. Uh, it's been out of, out of town for the past, since Monday, three days now. Having that transfer pump to put in, we'll be able to finally pump up our, our tank. Hopefully it should be in by the end of this week. While it's in the shop, we're actually updating the leak tower and putting in LED scene lights. Uh, so all four trucks now will have similar type lighting. Uh, this was something that that truck didn't come with back in two thousand and five. So it's about a nineteen hundred dollar upgrade. We got it in our maintenance budget. Certainly, uh, town manager's not here, but within the minutes that if there's any ARPA funds left over, we can squeeze another nineteen hundred on top of the twenty five thousand for the transfer pump. That would be awesome. But if not, we'll. Recently, we, we had six batteries replaced on engine eighty three. Last year's budget, we did engine eighty one. Uh, it's just seven year old trucks already. So, you know, it both, because we had one that was starting to off gas and the battery had known to kind of explode or go bad. So we figured seven year batteries, let's just get them all done. Don't burn our station down. Today, we closed on the Monmouth property, the Firehouse Museum property. So, uh, I property at seven fifty six Main Street. Um, I've already taken insurance out on the property so to ensure the structure and to cover what we owe the property owner and a little sum for a little extra value of the property and then to go to a liability policy. Next step is to get together with main cabinet masters and go there and do a walkthrough, build a game plan for the next year, how we're gonna, uh, do the restoration of the property. Uh, will be some stuff we're gonna do. I'll keep you guys posted on, on progress, but pretty exciting times. Uh, Mary's not here, but I just want to publicly thank her for, you know, meeting us halfway and have given us this opportunity to buy that property. I'll put a bug in his ear, but it's not here, but I'll put a bug in about tax exemption. We'd love to get that off the books. You guys don't want to hear that, but, um, it's my understanding the taxes, uh, on that property are relatively high for what's currently sitting there. And I think that's because it was valued at two buildings that were there and now went gone. So hoping under our nonprofit, future five one C three status will get that except it'd be a museum and memorial. And then the last thing I got is, uh, the golf scrambles this Friday. So today from now, I wrote the twenty three teams. And, uh, I hope.
We're doing.
Thank you. I'll jump over it. I told you at the last meeting that I was gonna do the community night out thing, but I've got a one more, one more meeting here tonight. We'll talk about community night out. Great success. Uh, success. Uh, we had probably between a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy five people in attendance. You want to call him back?
No, I, I was finished. Uh, I don't know if there was any questions. I didn't think there were. We've already rectified the problem. It was very fun.
You guys are amazing.
Sorry, can I have the point? I dipped this in, in my thing, but I did want to update you. The siren in town, we had that looked at. It's junk. Recorded, uh, or power, motor power, I think, with that five grand to rebuild that engine, build the bush or whatever. I don't have the money, so it's either going to stay out of service definitely. Or if we come up with five thousand somehow, uh, we can have it rebuilt and restored, but it's going to be a used motor. If the pushers in it, we don't know how long that will last.
It's one of those that's a love hate relationship. He goes off, you love Eric too.
Yeah. I'll update you. Thank you.
All right, so, um, we had about a hundred and seventy five people in attendance. We cooked a hundred and forty five hamburgs, a hundred and twenty four hot dogs, which you ran out of.
Giving you the hot dog count?
What we didn't, what we ran short of. Thank you.
Just want to thank, thank Public Works, the Fire Department, Fish and Game, Free Falls Credit Union, Trail, Trail Boys. Hudson Public Library Alliance, Blood and Banger Savings, Cabinet Master, and the Age Friendly Committee to take in fire in the event and making it successful at work. Um, and again, lately, thank you all for all your hard work on that event. Much appreciated. Um, also during the event, we were able to sell three hundred and fifty dollars worth of raffle tickets to help fund the Maine Special Olympics. Moving to the next. We didn't receive speeding complaints on the Ridge Road. Some of you received emails on that. We placed the speed line, the speed line up there and I provided you with some of the statistics from that. It's under this form right here. Just real, real quick, if you go to page four on that, you'll see the pipe chart. And it breaks down the number of vehicles. We had, um, six hundred and forty eight vehicles in that week's time come through that radar. Time. Four hundred and seventy three were doing less than forty, a hundred and nineteen were doing forty one to forty five. At fifty, doing forty six to fifty five, fifty five, fifty one to fifty five, and one fifty six to sixty. So, uh, that was, that was in the thirty five mile an hour zone. That flat stretch before you get to Jack's traps where we have signs set up. So really, um, for the, for the amount of traffic coming through there, there really wasn't any real big speed issues that were concerned. I mean, there's a couple there that are twenty to twenty one mile an hour of the speed limit, but that's as extreme as I was expecting. And just the last, the last one I, I put in there was one we set up on Wilson Pond Road. And I just added this in there just so you would hit an idea. I mean, Ridge Road, six hundred and forty eight vehicles came through that on, um, Wilson Pond Road. We had twenty five hundred and twenty seven vehicles travel that road in a week's time. And down to the campground. It just showed you how much use that road is getting and why Public Works is having to spend so much time down there in this type of wet weather repairing that road. And again, the, the, on that road, the average, average speed on that was thirty two point one seven miles per hour, with the highest speeds being fifty four miles an hour on that road. So not, not a speed issue, but definitely a, a volume issue, the amount of traffic to me and not of that. We had the air conditioning condenser replaced on the two thousand and sixteen Ford and that was eleven hundred dollars, a hundred dollar bill on that one. But at the same time, they, they replaced the radiator in the cross town because they're broken in there. Condenser was from, we kind of made up on that deal. And just finalize that. I just thank the men and women of the police department here for their efforts during the night out event here. We definitely appreciated their help and appreciate everybody that showed up. Any questions?
I had a, um, towns person mentioned to me the trucks falling out to, um, the new ball fields in Winthrop on one thirty five. And I mean, I lived it for how many years with McGee when they were coming to build the school. So I think, you know, that might be either a call to McGee. I know we did that in the past and just said, hey, you know, that's not the best road. Yeah.
One day.
Yeah, so because they were talking about, you know, the trucks and the speed, but it's.
It's all, the, the speed it is relative. You get a big truck out there.
Oh, yeah, the noise.
Forty miles an hour. It seems like they're doing seventy and they're really not.
It's certainly, I know. I, I get it. I understand that, but I'm just passing it along.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'd forward the board.
Comment? Yes. Actually wrote something to say tonight because this will be far less emotional that way. So as a member of the community, I want to take the time to speak on statements made at the last meeting. I, like many others in this town, have a really large interest, not as an adult or just as a parent with kids in our school, but as the mother of the minor teenage boy that was allowed to be crucified at the last meeting. She was ridiculed and blamed for incidents at the beach. He decided to step out of his comfort zone to apply for the job dealing with the public. Something if you knew him at his core, you would know was hard for him. At his core, he's gentle, calm, meticulous and genuine. He chooses not to be bothered by people because he knows they aren't always kind. He has a way to maintain his composure when most people would become hostile. It's a blessing and a curse for him, but he handles it in stride. I cannot tell you the number of stories I've heard from him, others in town, and witnessed myself about how poorly he's been treated at that gate. He's been screamed at for rules he's simply informing people of. His honesty of not allowing people to buy beach passes as we found out they've done in past years. His record keeping is flawless to a fault. Even as his mother, he would stop me and ask for my beach pass because it wasn't displayed. Did I laugh and seen it ridiculous? Yes, but I also understood the process. A tally for beach passes, townspeople, out of town or guests and so on. If your beach pass is displayed on your vehicle invisible, it doesn't stop you. Yet the adults during the last meeting laughed at him stopping the same car, perhaps because none of you realize that that's the process they follow. Maybe you should have asked. In fact, I was present at the beach when a member sitting in this room tried to argue about wanting him to allow out of towners a month prior to the vote two weeks ago. Grown adults in positions of power, trying to strong arm a teenage boy and sit here while the blame was placed on him and the statement made of how unfit he is to work with the public. How can any adult who contrary to what they claim make a statement of that magnitude about a child once she doesn't even know? How can members of the board allow it when it directly goes against your own guidelines of public comment? Specifically, the subject matter section. My son, who knew nothing about the content of the last meeting, was approached afterwards by various members of the community apologizing. He watched the video, feeling defeated by the statements made about him in a room full of adults, absent his supervisor or anyone to speak on his behalf. All he was doing was his job. Isn't that something to praise instead of shame? So he stepped outside of his comfort zone only to be ridiculed by adults and having to explain to him that what was said speaks more about the person who said it than him. It won't matter. It will still be an echo in his mind, most likely for the rest of his life. Long after you've all forgotten what was said, next time, keep in mind how harshly you judge and crucify today's generation, those doing what they're told. You may see him as unfit, but to so many who know him, he's an amazing young man. I'm proud of him because when so many have passed judgment without knowing him, he still shines and I admire that in him. I'd be willing to bet most of you sitting in this room don't know his name, let alone anything about him. But you all sat back and blindly allowed a teenage town employee to be ridiculed without any background information. Shame on all of you for that. As adults, we need to do better. As a community, we must do better. And as human beings, perhaps we must remember what you say sometimes means more than what you do. I urge you all to perhaps apologize, reflect on your own actions or inactions, and just be decent human beings.
Here. I make a motion that we issue a letter of apology for not enforcing our rules of decorum to this young man.
I will second that motion.
So Ken made a motion and Mark seconded it to, uh, write a letter of apology to is it Andy?
Chris. Chris, it's Chris.
Uh, London?
Kirby.
Chris Kirby. I wasn't.
Well, can I, uh, can I see the policy that was violated?
I have it right here. If you'd like.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to look at.
I have a copy too.
Right under subject matter. In my conversation with Justin, he said that it was up to the chair of the board to stop that conversation from happening.
I don't think you guys realize as gate attendants, when you guys are changing the rules on us every couple of weeks, what it's literally doing, not just to Chris as a teenage boy. I'm thirty eight years old. I can hold my own. It is hard. You have to tell that person that you told two weeks ago that they have to pay now that they can come in or they can't come in or whatever it is. So when you guys change two weeks ago that we can allow anybody in, they do not stop at the gate anymore. We cannot control who's coming in and out. Our playground is being destroyed because we have out of towners coming in, parents encouraging those kids to use the playground unsafely, the equipment not correctly. We either need to bring it up to the townspeople and let them vote on how we're going to do it. We can't keep changing these rules every two weeks or you are literally making our job harder.
Well, because it had never come behind before the town, we cannot charge money for something the town has not voted on.
Well, not charging money, but perhaps still, like we had talked about beforehand, putting it out to the public, you still need to stop at the gate. You guys said you wanted data. They can't get data if no one stops. They can't control who's in the parking lot to keep spots for residents if no one's stopping.
And then we have townspeople complaining that there's no parking.
There's no good answer for this because we made a decision based on information that was not correct. And then we had to correct that decision. So.
I'm just saying it does make our job a lot harder.
I understand that. You having it one way, one week and one way another. I definitely understand that, but we need to do the right thing because of.
We need to do legal.
Charging and still only allowed Monmouth residents because that's what the initial was before it was changed prior to. And instead of doing that, you went all the way back and the public took it as, oh, we can just go. We don't care. It doesn't matter. I mean, it's on Winthrop, Leeds, Greens, Madison, any public group page, it's all over there.
Well, I can't control.
No, right, but that's what I'm saying. But that's what we're saying. Right. What we're saying is that as soon as that information was out there, we.
And the climate has changed. Yes. It, it, it went from being a family oriented place to not so family oriented. Like we're dealing with more people disrespecting things, people bringing drinks down there that we now have to police that, you know, like it's just more things that we, we can deal with it, but it does make our job harder and it does put us in, you know, a situation that we weren't in before. You know, we, when we were allowed to say who can come and who can go, it, we're able to police our beach better and we're not having to call the police as often doing that. You know what I mean? Like now that we've had to call them a lot, but it, it's just made things more difficult.
Yeah. And it's hard, right? Because now if you change it again for the next two weeks, our last two weeks, we're going to be hammered. Right, but I'm just saying, no, no, I understand that you can't change it. But what I'm saying is like, we understand that we can't go back, that this is the way it is until the end of the season, but what can we do before we open up next season to make sure we are rolling on day one, same rules all season?
Yeah.
And that's really what we need to happen.
So the thing that has never happened is to have information and data to move forward, to put something on the ballot. So that is going to have to be an agenda item and then we have to, you know, let it have the wording written and reviewed by the town attorney to go on the ballot for November.
So do you want me to read that data for you? Like I can give it to you right now. So it's on record. So in the two week period that we were able to charge out of town residents, we collected four hundred and twenty five dollars. And that's was based off of the five dollars per person and twenty dollars per car. When telling the people that there was a fee, most were happy to pay it to, because they could use the beach. If all the rules, those that weren't, um, going to be staying long and didn't want to pay the fee, they declined and they didn't come. Um, it made it easy because people had a choice. You know, we weren't getting confrontation at the gate. It was their choice whether they want to stay or go. In the last two weeks, we've had, we're talking vehicles, not people. Um, Monmouth residents in the morning, we've had thirty per morning during swim lessons, vehicles and non, during non swim lessons of a hundred and eighty, which is an average fourteen per day. Um, for non residents, um, during that time period, there were twelve from Sabados, eleven from Lewiston, seventeen from Winthrop, nine from Augusta, twelve from out of state, um, people who didn't stop, twelve to fourteen per day.
Nine from Augusta, twelve from out of state, um people who didn't stop twelve to fourteen per day. Um people's just stating that they don't live in town, thirty two. Um townspeople complained about not having uh parking spots on the busy days. Um and then we talked about having to. Um talk to kids about the playground, misusing it and parents not helping enforce that. Um and we found that, you know, when people are paying to come in, they're more respectful of the property in general. And as far as like my perspective as the waterfront director. If we're, and I have no problem against non residents coming to the beach, like I, the more people that. Swim fine, they wanna learn how to swim great, like I not against that. We have a big out of town following for some less. However, they pay for swim lessons. So I feel like if they're coming to enjoy the beach, they should have to pay. Because they will respect it, but it also comes out of our budget, the toilet paper, the paper towels, the soap, the lifeguards, the equipment, the first aid supplies. That's all stuff that if we have to do anything while we're there, it's coming out of our equipment. So if they're using it, they're not paying anything towards that, you know, and we're as townspeople, we all pay towards it. You know, so it it only makes sense to make them pay a fee to come in, you know, it's a great place. I've worked there for twenty five years. It's it's a beautiful place, you know, and we should share it with people, absolutely, but make them be respectful of it.
We're certain that we can't. As a board. Make it necessary that people pay to get in. If they're not residents. We're certain that.
We're not the legislative branch, we're we're the executive branch.
But but we have been, uh the question is how we've been given the power to do this by the legislative branch.
So and and according to Chris's research, Chris went to Lori Walker, she was unable to find any mention of it.
Been a warrant article on a ballot to about this ever. The town has never voted on collecting. Fees at the beach, ever.
So I would suggest that we task the town manager for drafting a warrant item for the November election. That would authorize a select board to charge. Uh a fee, doesn't have to be specific, we would have the authority to set that fee. Um charge a fee and we could even limit. Uh limited to non resident people. So we're not authorized to charge residents fees, we're only authorized to charge fees to non resident. People for access to 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 the beach. That's pretty straightforward warrant item and. Uh there's a vote coming up in November, certainly within the window of being able to put that together.
If we couldn't, for whatever reason, we'd still be able to vote in June on it, you know, before the start of swim season.
Can I ask a silly question? We charge for swim lessons, right? So we're charging at the beach for swim lessons, like they pay a fee. How is charging non residents to get in any different?
Because you're a program, you're providing, you know.
But we are providing a recreational area facility for them, so why is that any different than ten year recreation?
But they're not signed up for anything. They're not signed up. Swim lessons, they sign up and do a form and. Just like the rec program, so.
No, I was just asking, I didn't, I don't know where like where it goes.
I I don't, I don't have a clear answer to that, but what I do.
Be under recreation like.
Maybe that should be on the article.
Well, that that would be my suggestion, so that it's perfectly clear for everybody, right?
You can charge for swim lessons.
Well, we do. I mean, we've always, we always.
I know, but but you might be doing it, but not have authority to do it. That's what we're worried about.
That's beyond me. I mean, they charge, but they charge for rec soccer and basketball and all that stuff anyway as well. So I'm sure there's something because swimming is part of the rec.
So when we do the article, we make sure that that's taken care of. That you're allowed to uh collect fees.
I would, I would be highly suspicious if we were to try and start charging for access to public property. And it only takes one person to complain and to file a lawsuit and then all five of us would be on the line for it.
No, I I have no problem. I was just curious, like I didn't know how it works because we do charge for the programs, so that's why I was asking.
We also gotta watch how many people we have down there at the beach. We have three hundred people down there. When we have two lifeguards.
It is, and I would also say maybe we want to be careful about how we put the warrant article together so that. If the light board can set a price. And then set another price if something's not working right. Right, the price is too low or too high, we've got too many people or people are. You know, upset that we're charging fifty dollars a visit, I mean, whatever. Yeah, so.
Right now, it's unlimited amount of people.
Exactly, and I hear you that that's a problem. And I also have a motion on the table.
Would you restate your motion?
Sure, uh. The motion, as I understand it, is uh to have the select board. Issue a letter of apology to the individual who was affected by our inability to enforce the rules of decorum in our last meeting.
So let's discuss it more, please. But what about a person's First Amendment right to come in, say?
So anybody can come in here and bash a town employee?
Yes.
First Amendment is is a powerful thing.
Yeah.
That's not what the rules are, because in years past, when there's been issues with town employees, it's gone into executive session. It starts here and then goes to executive session, however, but it wasn't established.
And then goes to executive session ninety percent of the time.
Because they don't know about it until somebody complains.
And to my recollection, no name was mentioned. I would never have known who they were talking about. I.
Third one, young male date attendant, all the lifeguard, say lifeguard, all of the staff.
So I would never know that because I don't know who. I mean, I know Lisa and I know my neighbor Sam Schultz. I would never know. They, a name wasn't mentioned, I wouldn't have a clue who that person was and. She said it and it moved on. I didn't even think again.
It was a twenty minute conversation.
But it wasn't about him, it was about.
You should rewatch.
So I have.
It starts an hour and twenty minutes. And it talks about how the young man sitting at the gate that she knows through her work with him in school and at the beach. Feels that he's unfit to work with the public. I would like to point out she has never worked with him. She's never even been in the same building as him. She has created.
But we don't have control over somebody saying something and it's out of the bag. It's out of the bag and been set. We can't take it back.
It says that if there are attacks against the select board or a towns person. That would be a direct attack on somebody as a person. It should have ended there, and if you wanted to take it to executive session, that's your right as a board. But it should not have been allowed to continue, and we're not talking about an eighteen year old person that works for the town. We're talking about a fourteen year old boy whose supervisor was not here because you guys had all said you weren't discussing the beach. And it was still brought up.
We weren't discussing the fees, so.
But it was discussed.
I don't know.
I just think it's crap.
I I I hear your First Amendment argument. I think our policy is pretty clear on the First Amendment that people get one comment. And then if it's considered beyond the bounds of. Reasonable or or. Then, I mean, the sentence is right here, personal attacks directed at any member of the board or the public. Will result in the speaker losing the floor, so if someone was in the floor, losing the floor, right, which just means they they need to stop talking.
Sit down. Shut up.
And we didn't do that.
We didn't, well.
And uh it seems pretty innocuous for us to just say, we didn't do that, sorry about that. I don't think that's a hard thing for us to be able to say.
There's policy.
Anyway, I. So I apologize to Chris for for. What happened and and you. Recognizing. I don't know what was going on.
If there's no more discussion, should we just vote?
So are you ready to vote? Yes. Those in favor of uh.
I just want the board to uh please stay on top of the planning board's. Application for a hundred acre site on Packard Road for a. Uh campground that's going to affect them uh with all those campers now being allowed to come around and using this. Beach. For all these campgrounds that are invading the state of Maine. And now a hundred acre site on Packard Road has been sold to a campground that is going to put a campground. In off of Packard Grove.
Do they not have beach access there?
And they're working on it.
And they're working on it.
Do they have waterfront?
And they have three hundred feet of waterfront, however, it is resource protected. But we all know how much money they have to pay to mitigate resource protection. Hundred acres, third uh thirty eight of it is in resource protection.
Has the planning board actually received a?
They had an impromptu meeting, not on the agenda. And had a discussion on this campground without anybody knowing about it.
So will the planning board be. Scheduling some sort of public hearing in advance of anyone?
Point you would think that they would have to. I just want to make sure everybody gets on the same page here, okay? Because it's, it's not out there, but now it's out there. I I want to make sure it's out there.
Thank you. I'm certainly aware that. It was only a handful of years ago that the town had to spend a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That was matched with another three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of federal funds. For an alum treatment of Cocknowagan Lake because the current use of the lake. As substantial.
Of that rest of the sixty acres going through resource protection and what that lake is gonna look like. They've already cut trails. Last weekend.
And you said how much of the frontage is resource protected?
I believe it's thirty two to thirty eight acres of the lower. Two hundred, two hundred fifty feet of that property is all resource protect. Did you see the map?
I did, and I was pretty sure it went from property line to property. I don't think there is any shore frontage on that particular law that is not in resource protection that borders the water. Is it that far you?
That is next to Diana.
Has there been any? Activity, construction activity in the shoreline zone?
No, that, not that I've seen. I think they, I think they're surveying is what I think they're doing.
There've been trucks on the.
There've been trucks and now it's all posted, no trespassing.
You referring to the Moose Tracks campground? Is that what they're calling it?
I have no idea.
A subdivision and site review? Because that was.
Same, Packard Road.
I, yeah, that was on the agenda. I have the agenda.
I did not see the agenda, it was not posted.
Oh, it should have been. This is the email.
Tomorrow's agenda is not posted.
And that should have been too, because I've given them both the word.
Not posted.
But there, it's legal for them to do that?
It what?
It's legal for the planning board to uh deal with a problem, something like that, no?
That's their prime function.
Nothing, no application has been submitted or anything yet.
Just a conversation that they brought. Impromptu agenda item. It was, but just to.
Yeah.
Because at the meeting, they hadn't even bought the land. They hadn't even.
Well, they bought the land based on that meeting. So tell me the decision wasn't rendered. Oh, we don't see a problem. I was on the board for eighty years. Oh, we don't see a problem. That's all it takes sometimes.
So wh- what should we be doing?
I would just keep your finger on the planning board, make sure they don't screw up this one. It will affect an awful lot of other taxpayer dollars. You can, as a board, recommend to the planning board, you can wish your opinion like everybody else can. We spent a million dollars on the town tree.
Knowing that, ha- having lived on Cocknowagan for ten years and knowing. The the little age, I don't see how there's land there between where Blaine Flummer. Is and where, well, that's Diana's place and then there's the uh A frame.
From the end of Diana's fence, from her driveway over to Blaine. Flummer's property line, not what he's using, the property line is waterfront. That's associated to that ninety, was it eight acres or ninety nine acre?
I thought it was just like a.
It's a swamp.
Yeah, it is exactly.
It's a swamp. Three telephone poles that you can see from the water.
It's three hundred, three hundred feet of waterfront, but then it goes like this.
Goes all the way up the back of the hundred acres. Roberts, Robert, Robinson and Pine, between Robinson and Pine, that whole section between here.
It's all posted. If you're concerned that they they're gonna use the beach, the town beach.
At your booties and they are. If people are gonna come here with a campground. And park their campers there.
They're not gonna be able to swim right there.
No, but they'll be able to traverse right over to the beach. It's the closest part to the beach that there is, I think, from that point.
I know when you said waters, I'm thinking, and we already have a hard time with. The frigging jet ski and the boaters trying to get your boats to swim area because. Apparently the big white things I have a person swimming on into the swimming area.
Don't make a difference.
It don't make a difference to some people like.
Well, you can park an extra two boats now with the extra dock there.
So, well, we're just gonna make it bigger next year. There was a little padding.
Just, I I just wanted you. Just let you brag my own looks right now.
Yeah, it's over, I don't know. Obviously. Okay, any other public comment? Then on to consider creating a fifth police officer position. What, we've, do we want to talk about it anymore, or do we know enough to? Make a decision?
I make a motion, we approve the fifth police officer position.
I'll second.
So motion by Chris, second by Kent, to create a fifth police officer position. All those in favor?
Well, can we discuss it?
Sure.
What, so this fifth, this fifth officer. What, what is it going to do for the pay scale?
Don't you remember the last meeting? We gave a, it's really elaborate presentation on that. How it would, how it worked, how it would work and. Why it wouldn't cost any money.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be no increase in this year's budget. Due to the, the position that I'm in now and the offset in my salary. That.
The amount we budgeted.
Forty, forty thousand dollars that they're saving on my position is going to be used towards funding that along with. The reduced amount of overtime we'll have to spend plus. The reserve pay that we won't be paying out. Will be more than enough to cover that fifth officer position with no, no increase in the budget.
And I, I do recall we're talking about if we have a inexperienced officer would be paying how much per hour?
It's roughly, if you start him at the, the two year step, it would be roughly around twenty four, thirty an hour. I think it's twenty four, thirty eight, but don't quote me on that, that's roughly in that.
And this additional officer would do what for our ability for coverage?
It's going to give us twenty four seven coverage. So we'll have someone on the road all the time now.
Because right now, we, there's a period of time where there's no coverage, right?
Correct, it's two thirty in the morning till six, we have no coverage.
Yeah, don't, don't tell the teenagers.
Because they are, you know.
Yeah. Already have the auxiliary cruiser, so there's no expense there. We've got two thousand sixteen that. It's the reserve car now that we're going to full time operation.
I'm fine with this.
All right. So the motion by. Chris, second. To create a position for the police department, all those in favor? You, next is to consider the appointment of John Davinsky for the planning board. I don't know if. Does it say as an alternate?
Yes, it will be an alternate because we have built the. Full, you know, the full positions, so there's only an alternate position, so. When we make the motion, we'll send. Yeah.
I make, I make the motion. That we appoint John Davinsky as an alternate. Member of the planning board.
I'll second that.
So I understood he did not want to be an alternate. That's what I was going. He wasn't going to accept the position if he.
That's up to him, but.
Well, shouldn't we find out whether he'll accept the position?
Well, he doesn't have to get sworn in, so, but the thing is, from the discussion we had two weeks ago. He very rarely comes to the meetings and I queried. Steve O'Donnell and got a response from him about his attendance. And I don't think that we should appoint people. To positions if they aren't going to attend, especially something as important as the planning board. And if Rick Grant is coming to all the meetings and is an alternate, why would we not want him to be a full time member? So. And he, you know, applied for the full time member and got his paperwork in on time and. That was not the case with. You know. With Davinsky's application, so that's why it's on this time.
So isn't there, isn't that going to be the same problem if he doesn't come to meetings?
Well, but as, as opposed to. Not always having a quorum and having issues with that, if he doesn't come to the meeting, he's an alternate, so he wouldn't be voting anyway, so.
Maybe we should find a candidate who's interested in attending.
And I think that they've been advertised, so. If he go want to, if he doesn't accept the position and there's an alternate available, then we'll repost the position.
Where the motion was to. Wait. John Davinsky as an alternate to the plan. You made the motion, Kent made the motion, Chris seconded it. All those in favor of. Pointing John Davinsky. As an alternate to the planning board, oh, yes. And Joe, you're opposed?
I'm opposed, okay. Do you have that?
I got it.
Okay, and. To consider awarding the property tax revaluation project. Who? We have two. Companies that. Abided. Proposals. And as you, maybe as you read, Donna. And Justin both. Felt that the.
K R T.
K R T was the better. Company.
They've been lower too, didn't they?
I think it was. I'd have to go back and double check that, but I think. You can go find the email.
Do you want to know the event?
Well, that's my impression that they, there was, theirs was a little bit.
Okay.
And the good thing is that they're going to, you know. Upgrade the computer program and system and all of that, so we'll have a bunch. Sounder safer computer program that we're using as well, so. And from talking with Justin about this, they've done oodles in Massachusetts, New Hampshire and Vane and. People has been on and on and on, so. Yeah, and I think he used to work for. The other company anyway, so. Yeah.
We were for visiting.
Yes, yeah.
I made, I make a motion that we accept the proposal for the property tax revaluation project from K R T.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Kent, second by Chris. Who award the property tax revaluation proposal to K R T, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Next, to consider the ballot for MMA Vice President and Executive Committee members. And it's a little bit explaining what that is. Get these every year. And there's only, like, we don't. Only a slate that has. One person in deep position. So. Vote for one, vote for three.
By Tim's devil advocate for you?
No, I know.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we table this item.
There you go.
Why table?
Because it has to be voted on by August eighteenth, so.
So you don't want to vote on it.
There's never a choice, every year. People run for it and. You know, they're the only ones that put their name in there and it's just the MMA. Committee, so.
They're, they're certainly well qualified, they have great reservations.
So.
So we don't, we don't vote for it, they're going to get voted in anyhow.
I might play the game. I said round file.
I think you made a motion.
I'll second. So, those in favor of. Right, you vote?
Yes.
Those in favor of tabling?
You got six?
Oh, Tim will be so proud.
We've made him happy. Oh, next is to consider. A request from the Apple Fest Committee to close Main Street. Just for that one, a short period of time. September thirtieth from seven AM. Three thirty PM. And he says he's checked with. The chief.
I make a motion, we approve the request for the Apple Fest Committee to close Main Street for Apple Fest on September thirtieth.
Second.
So the motion by Chris, second by Kent to. Was Bagel Street for the, for the Apple Fest, although in favor. Thank you. Next is fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, warrant number two.
And he sent this, so if you want me to read them. I can actually read this better than the printed one, so. Anders Goggan Bank. Fifty six thousand one hundred and forty three. Dollars for debt service, Anders Goggan Bank. Twenty four thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars, forty three cents for debt service. Augusta Fuel, a thousand and ten. That's for the repairs at Compton Hall for the sewer. Issue. There, Bakers Road itilling, eight thousand one hundred dollars for roadside mowing. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transfer. Two thousand five hundred sixty four dollars. Captain One Public Funding, this is debt service for fire department equipment. One hundred and seven thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety six dollars and five cents. Okay. C and P, one thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and eleven cents. P J's Municipal Supply for Barricades, one thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty cents. Dennis C Burke. Fuel. One thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars, thirty five cents. Family Violence Project Donation, one thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars. G D I Janitorial, three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty seven cents. K and B Builders. Six thousand six hundred and forty one dollars. Those were the repairs on Compton Hall. Kenabett Property Services, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Kenabett Valley Community Society, one thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars and twenty cents. U Serra Copiers, one thousand six hundred and seventy eight dollars and thirteen cents. Flarshell Consulting. That's Eco Development, one thousand twenty five dollars. Main Equalization Consultants. Assessing, two thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents, Main Resource Recovery Association. Tire Removal for the Transport Station, two thousand three hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty seven cents. Main Technology Group, I T Support. That total is five thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars and ninety six cents. Main Waste Energy Tipping Fees, six thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars and twenty cents. Bomber Fire Auxiliary, Townwide Dance. Three thousand nine hundred and eighty six dollars and eighty five cents, that whole total for the. Beach party, I guess, so that total was six thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy. Royer Advisors. Seven thousand forty dollars and ninety six cents. Year of Motor Vehicles, twenty one thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy six cents. T Burnham Landscaping. Twenty four hundred. Count of Litchfield, this is the twenty percent cost share of the Woodbury Dam. Thirty three thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars and seventy one cents. And that is it for a total. For. This is. Three hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and three dollars and twelve cents.
I make a motion, we. Approve warrant number two of fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
I'll second that.
So Kent has made a motion, Chris has seconded it to. Approve. Warrant number two for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, all those in favor? I will abstain. And I. Chris. I'm going to write a letter of apology. You know, it's. It, it. I never, I don't realize, of course, I, I was a teacher for forty four years and I would. I, I would, I'd feel so terrible about putting up. I did in, in a position like that. That's something I wouldn't do, but I just. I don't know. Too unaware of what was going on, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, so hardly, certainly doesn't make up for like all the, everybody who's. Seen this and. Terrible. So where, where would I send, send a letter?
Maybe you want to say it off the record?
Yeah.
Yeah, off the record, get it off the record.
Hit it off the record, would it be?
Recording it, so we wanted, he can give you his address after we adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn.